Good morning, everyone. It's great to see so many of you here, especially on a Monday morning. I was wondering if the timing is gonna work, but thank you so much for taking the time and effort. So my name is Swati and I am the Head of Talent Performance and Innovation at Westminster City Council. And I just, I mean, I can't see all of you, but I'm gonna keep smiling as well just to, you know, obviously welcome you and answer any questions as we go along as well. And so we were, we won the show's Best Talent Program at PPMA, which we were absolutely thrilled to receive. And when PPMA asked us to do this, it was quite interesting because you don't see a lot of these happening. And because there's lots of awards going on, but you don't really get to, um, talk a lot about your story. I, I think a lot of you may already be doing some of the things we're doing. So, uh, you know, hopefully you will still find this helpful. But I just to kind of make sure that we're kind of aligned and on the same page. So we're gonna talk a little bit about the program, which we put forward for the award, which is the Emerging Leaders Program. And I'll talk a little bit about our sort of general approach, et cetera. But as session as a session progresses, I'll try and cover four specifics of the program. So the first one will be, our culture, um, so which is, you know, which has been our driver. And it's important to make a reference to that because all the programs and all the work that we're doing with regards to talent development has been, you know, focusing on the outcomes you're trying to achieve and that culture we're trying to create. So I'll talk a little bit about that. We'll then go on to talk about the approach in terms of what we were trying to hope and what we were hoping to achieve through, through the program. I'll talk a little bit about the program without going into too much of information. And we'll talk a little bit about the, the impact as well in terms of what we managed to achieve through the program itself. We've got thirty minutes and please feel free to, um, you know, post any questions. Grace is very kindly agreed to kind of flag any questions to me so we can take the questions as we go along. Or we probably have some, uh, some time at the end as well, so we can take questions then. But you know, obviously outside of that, this as well, we're very happy to kind of connect with you and answer any questions if needed. So I'll just start on, uh, conscious of time, I'll start on with the first part. So, um, I don't know, uh, I mean, we've been working with alongside a lot of organizations. Some of you may have seen this. So, we, we, we've been on a bit of a cultural journey. So, so as an organization, we've been on a cultural journey for about, I want to say about three, four years. And we've been very passionate about kind of defining the culture we're trying to create. So we believe in all the outcomes and whatever we want to achieve, we can do that through our culture. So that's been a very important part of our how. And the Westminster Way is our people's strategy. So we want, so we say, you know, we want to create a culture of openness, transparency, integrity. And we want our staff to be the very best. And we say, well, it's underpinned by three major pillars, which is personal development, um, everyone has talent, valuing our people and diversity, which is everyone's valued. And the Westminster Way of working, which is everyone's a leader. So these are, these are very important for us because these are our core tenants and they define the work we do. And whatever we do, we make sure that we are reflecting on these. And although the work might kind of sit in with one of the pillars, it's important for us to be touching through all of them and not, not just, you know, one specific part of this. And the, you know, all the talent work, you know, as you might have guessed, it sits within the everyone has talent pillar. But you know, through the work, we want to make sure that we are creating, you know, self-leading opportunities for people. We're also making sure that it's accessible. It's diverse, it's inclusive. Um, and you'll kind of, uh, as we go along, you'll find a little bit more about how we've tried to embed it through the program. And so just going on to our approach, um, so when we started the Emerging Leaders Program, it's actually our Leadership Development Program. So this is for our, you know, aspiring leaders, our new managers. And even people who are not in the management sphere yet. So it's for people who want to develop in, into future leaders. And we wanted to create a talented and diverse pool of our next generation. And, you know, as we kind of progress, so we had this program for a couple of years, but we were, what we are finding is that there were probably still, a lot of barriers in how people are approaching it. So as you would have imagined, a lot of, you know, um, programs are, you know, the people participation is led by the leaders. You know, it's normally the, the people leaders and the managers, or the head of services that put forward people that they want to. So we got actually, you know, if we, in the true spirit of the Westminster Way, you know, we can't continue like that. And we can, we are going to have to make some changes, which we did in the last year. And we said, well, actually, we're just gonna completely turn it to self nomination. So if you are, if you are an aspiring people leader, you want to be a, um, a leader in the future, you can self nominate yourself. You don't need, someone else to put you forward. And there were, there were some really good aspects of that because, you know, A, if you are putting yourself forward, you're more likely to be more engaged and committed to the program. But B also, you know, you're not having the same people being tapped on the shoulder where, um, you know, it's, it's based on, you know, people's obviously, you know, biases or also just, you know, in terms of who people, it's people who always put themselves forward and stuff like that. So there was, there was a lot of, um, you know, appreciation for that because it just opened up opportunities for people. We also took away the manager's approval. So, um, some of you might worry when I say this, but, we, what we said is, you know, if you're saying everyone is a leader, we cannot say that, you know, if your manager, you know, man, your manager needs to approve or put you forward for that. And it was kind of linking to the first part of this. But, you know, you still need that support. You know, you cannot go away on a tangent without having conversations. So what we said is, instead of having an approval process, what you need is your manager's support. So, you know, you're, you're absolutely, um, you know, you can absolutely put yourself forward. But have a conversation with your manager, tell them about your kind of aspirations, get their support and move forward. And on the other side, obviously, we had to make sure that, uh, you know, like I talk about the culture itself, that our managers are, uh, you know, are aware of the role they play in all of this. So it was, you know, none of this could have been possible without us trying to create that supportive learning culture on the other side of, of this as well. And so, and, and the other, I think the, one of the others, um, barriers that we found was, you know, there were a lot of people who were not in line management roles. So, you know, if you are, it's that title of, you know, I'm not a line manager, so I can't be a line manager because I don't, I can't get the support. So, so we broke that as well. So you didn't require to be a line manager for you to go on the program, um, as long as your manager can support you to, find opportunities. So as long as you can coach, mentor, or, you know, uh, set objectives for that, for the duration of the program. And that could be within the pro, but it could be within the teams, it could be outside the teams, you were able to apply your learning. And, um, but you, it doesn't have to be a core part of your job. And we made sure that, you know, our teams and managers were aware of this and, and they were supportive. And of this, it was not a challenge for the participant. We made the, with the program expectations quite clear. I mean, I think they were quite clear before, but, I don't think people understood the, um, the implications and the time commitments for it. So we made sure that that was quite clear. So we did lots of information sessions, we did lots of drop-ins, um, there were like, for like FAQs, et cetera. But there was a lot of interaction in terms of a step-by-step journey and the, you know, what your typical day or your month or your year would look like. So people were quite clear in terms of their, this, their expectations. There was also stuff for managers so they could make sure that, you know, they were aware of the, um, you know, support and the, the role they were playing in all of this. We also tried to minimize our rejections. I think that's always quite kind of, uh, you know, when we talk about especially there's, there's always a risk when you talk about, you know, creating opportunities and barriers. You know, it's always quite disheartening for people who do get rejected, um, on programs. And we, we made sure that our rejections were, you know, um, only, you know, only, done if required, you know. So, uh, I'll talk a little bit about the program itself, but the program is actually an apprenticeship program. So we made sure that the only reason that they couldn't do a program is if they didn't meet the technical requirements for the apprenticeship. But as long as in the other questions were, um, were, were concerned, if people, you know, didn't, didn't kind of were, didn't provide the right information, we'd even go back to them and say, actually, we found that you haven't answered this question or you haven't, spoke about, spoken about these terms, you know, do you want to read it? So we, we kind of worked with them to make sure the opportunities were there. And as we go along, you'll, you'll, you'll see why this was important because, you know, when people took, when, when people think about, progression of futures within an organization, you know, leadership is a very important part of that. And some people see that their career trajectory is actually quite linear. So that you can only go forward in that approach if you are going into leadership positions. So, um, that was, that was really important. And we want to make sure that people are not missing out on opportunities because they were not doing, you know, good applications or they were not answering something that we, we thought they should have answered. So we were just creating that space. Grace, I'm gonna stop there for a second before I go on to the actual program, if there's any pressing questions.
Not at the moment.
Cool, thank you. Um, so just thinking about the program, so as I mentioned, it's, uh, it was, um, the program itself is funded by the Apprenticeship Levy. So it's an apprenticeship program. And, uh, you know, this also kind of links in with our talent, uh, approach with regards to apprenticeships. So, you know, we didn't want apprenticeship levy to, you know, we've got a lot of apprentices, I mean, a lot of organizations have, quite, you know, reasonable and suitable, um, amounts of apprenticeship levy to spend. But we didn't want to spend levy, uh, for the sake of it, you know, because that's, you know, I know that, you know, things can really pile up. And, and you're wondering, you know, how you spend that levy. But we just wanted to be very clear that, you know, this was an opportunity rather than, you know, uh, um, kind of a burden or anything quite challenging. Because, you know, we always struggle, you know, in terms of thinking about, you know, where do we fund our, our programs? Or a lot of local authorities will probably understand that, you know, when you talk about development, there's, um, there's always, we don't always need to be mindful of, you know, our funding, et cetera. But in terms of the actual apprenticeship levy, it was a great opportunity for us because the money was there. So we partnered with Multiverse who are a tech startup. I'm not sure if, uh, many of you have heard of them. But they've done, like, they've scaled up, um, really well in the past few years. And they've kind of revolutionized how apprenticeships are seen, are seen. So they, I think that has been a really important, um, path and a really, really important part of that. Because it was, you know, we had to move away from this vendor supplier mentality to actually a partnership approach. And I think that's really worked for us because they have worked with us on, um, all of our, um, kind of priorities. So it's been about customer success rather than, oh, we just deliver a program for you. So we created the content and delivered a high-impact, um, you know, program. So there were also elements of some non-apprenticeship, programs and some activities that we aligned where we thought it could kind of enhance and, um, make that quite, um, useful for the candidates. So, uh, the qualification itself was twelve to fifteen months, um, long. So which is why you might understand the, the point I was making about, you know, it being quite intense. But it's, it's one of our most successful programs till date. Um, people are still querying with us on, on when our next uptake has been. So it's been immensely popular despite the fact that it's, it goes on for over a year. You are required to do your, um, assignments. You also have your off-the-job training, uh, and requirements of, of that. You need to apply your, um, you know, learning on the job as well. But despite all that, I think the learning and the, what people have gained from that has been, has been immense. And which is why we wanted to create an experience, which is, you know, it was in the case of you learn something, you go and you forget it. But something that you learn, you apply on the job and, um, it takes you to where you need to be in your career. And, um, on just on the career front as well, you know, we, we are very conscious that not everyone wants to, you know, kind of progress. Some people are just happy where they are. And that's absolutely fine. But it was about, um, how do you become the best version of yourself? Or how do you put yourself forward in the way you want in your, in your own career aspirations? So that was quite of, quite, quite important for us. I'll talk a little bit about the diversity date as well because, um, as I was saying, you know, it was, you know, everyone has talent has been the core pillar in terms of us driving our talent work. But, you know, touching into our diversity and opportunities is, is equally important. Um, and I want to share a few figures with you without going, going to too much detail. But, um, you know, we are, as an organization, we, um, publish our information on pay gaps for, um, gender and ethnicity. And we're definitely where, we're definitely not where we need to be. We still have a gap. And we are, you know, in, in the words of our chief exec, relentlessly trying to get there. But, you know, there's obviously more work to be done. And, and I personally feel that, you know, the talent work and the development stuff we do is vital to that journey. Because, you know, it's all about opportunity, it's about learning, it's about, uh, breaking those barriers. And, you know, as a result of the changes we made, we, um, we got a really high uptake in terms of our women and, um, you know, our colleagues from a BME background as well. And if you think about the actual, um, the size of the, of, of people who've been on that is about, it's, it's almost close to one hundred and fifty. So it's been immense in terms of, you know, and it's, it's been a kind of, it's been cyclical. Because, um, you cannot run these programs on their own. You know, it has, it kind of develops a reputation of its own. And people talk about their experience and that's how you get people coming back as well. I just want to also kind of bring your attention towards the age bracket. You know, it's quite interesting because, um, you'll see a majority of them in that thirty and thirty-nine bracket. But, you know, if you think about the early, you know, you might think actually it's the younger people who are trying to do that. Actually, actually it is, um, people in the middle-aged groups as well. You know, early to middle age as well, because there we have a lot of, you know, um, people as, as other organizations who are probably not where they want to be. So they're kind of, um, in that middle layer or they're on that cusp of becoming, um, middle managers, but don't feel that they're able to do that or been in, in jobs for a very long time. So that was a really interesting distribution for us. We're really happy to get representation because, um, we were able to go beyond, even for our, for our female staff, beyond what we actually have representation within the organization as well. And that's been, that's been front and center for us. So it has really helped us. I'll go on to the impact as I think is probably one of the most important things, um, for us to measure. Because, you know, we, we run a lot, a lot of programs, um, but, you know, what was really important for us to see what impact that has created. So as you can see, obviously, we spoke about equity, diversity, inclusion, and I spoke about the data figures in the last slide. But, um, I think what was really important for us was also the participant's success and, and experience. So, um, you know, we had ninety-four completion. I've been talking about the, before the last one. So we've had, you know, majority completions. There's some people who are still on program, so it doesn't include them. But, uh, if you think about the actual success in terms of endpoint assessment, for those of you who might be familiar with, uh, with apprenticeships, you know, that is a really critical part of the program. So for them to have passed that is, is really commendable. Um, the distinction figures were also quite high. Although, you know, I always say it's, it's more about the experience rather than what you get, but it's always a good to get, you know, that kind of a result out of the program. And, uh, you know, and for the most recent one, it's been even higher. So I think the overall success for the program has been very, um, refreshing for us because it was, it was not just about going on, on the program. But it was also about doing, we're doing well on that and getting the best out of that program. The progression, as you might have, you know, there was, we didn't set out to measure that to start with because we said, well, it was about the learning journey. It's about equipping people to, um, get on to that kind of journey themselves. But, you know, we couldn't help but kind of ask people how they've been. So, um, we have, um, been notified of lots of progressions as a direct result of this program as well. And I think that has more to do with, um, the confidence it helps you build, you know, the kind of tools that you're learning. And things that you probably already inherited but weren't sure about, um, kind of being open about, uh, having conversations within the organization. The feedback was generally quite positive. Uh, but I think the most interesting part in all of this for me was that we managed to create an apprenticeship ecosystem in the sense that, um, you know, we have apprentice hires coming in, uh, every year. And we were finding that because these were kind of new aspiring managers, uh, some who had now kind of moved into a, a management roles. They understood the, the, they understood the apprenticeship program so well that they were very supportive of, of the people coming into their team. So they were creating either coaching mentoring, but also they had people coming into their teams and they were managing. So we had, you know, ex-apprentice, uh, program, uh, people now kind of managing. And, and that helped us create that kind of, it reinforces that, you know, learning on the job, uh, making, you know, keeping your kind of, your learning journey going to kind of go quite consistent and ongoing. And it helped us kind of drive that culture of, you know, everything is learnable. And that you can, you can, you can, you know, you can, you can do what you need to based on, um, the tools and techniques that are available to you. So this is, I mean, um, this is kind of like, like I was saying, it is more about the program. But, uh, you know, I'm very happy to kind of talk about our general approach as well. But, um, the program itself has been, like I said, it's been one of our most successful programs. So the program itself has enabled us to kind of, um, you know, identify apprenticeships as a key way of, you know, driving our skills culture. And, um, you know, as a, as someone who's responsible for talent, um, the, the building the skills culture is really important for, for me personally. Because, you know, we, we need to be ready for, you know, future skills. And, and there's lots of kind of, there's lots of talks about, you know, what the future skills are. You know, we talk a little bit about digital, et cetera. But I think apprenticeship has created that opportunity for us. And, and seeing, um, seeing that applied to a, a generalized kind of an audience and also seeing it in a way that it did work, it gave us more confidence in using the same principles for our other apprenticeships. So, you know, I was talking about, um, you know, how we might see that, you know, the career parts are quite linear. But we, we, we said, actually, you know, your, your career paths don't have to be linear. If you're trying to, um, you know, find, um, job opportunities or you're trying to find career pathways for you to eventually lead to where you are. Well, actually, the, the journey can, can be zigzag and could kind of be quite horizontal. And we started to offer our kind of data analysts, project management, coaching, uh, digital apprenticeship roles where, um, where people could, you know, um, you know, obviously you might have done the leadership and then do something else. But actually you might feel, actually, I don't need leadership. I just want to move, forward in some way. Then, so we created opportunities that were kind of around the same principles of giving people opportunities to progress in the organization. Gain some future skills, you know, become specialists in the roles that they aspire to be, um, but then move up in the ladder as they, they required. So I think the Emerging Leaders Program has, um, taught us a lot. Uh, you know, we've kind of improvised as we went along. Because we started somewhere and then we, um, landed in a different space. But it gave us a lot of energy and, um, kind of thought into what the future might hold. And we, you know, we're now kind of thinking about our Senior Leaders Program as well. So, which will probably not be an apprenticeship, but it's given us a lot of food for thought in terms of what works, what's really kind of, uh, helping people develop. You know, so in terms of the broader sense of it, it's about, um, yes, it's about future skills, you know, yes, it's about our future generation. But it's also about, you know, creating opportunities for our people. Um, it's also about creating a, a learning culture. And it's, it's about, um, ensuring that we're breaking down barriers, we're creating more opportunities for people and that we are, you know, representing the, the residents, the communities and obviously the organization that we serve. So, um, I'll stop talking at that. Uh, probably there's a, there's lots of, um, information for you to digest. So I'm gonna stop, um, talking and see if you have any questions or, or comments. Grace, I have not seen the chat. I don't know if there's any questions there that you wanted me to pick up.
Yeah, we have a question from J C. Um, he's asking which apprenticeship is Emerging Leaders based on?
So this is the, uh, they call it the people leaders, um, it's, it's the people leaders, uh, standards. I can send you a link if you want, uh, Jimmy on that. So it's, it's, um, I want to say it's level three. No, no, I think it's level five apprenticeship. And I can send you the standard, uh, for it as well. So it's, um, Multiverse have delivered for us, but there will be other providers who will do the exact same apprenticeship.
Thank you. Um, that's all I have in questions. Um, but it might be that some people might want to just shout up, um, if they've got any questions rather than pop them and having to type and pop them in the chat.
I think I've told everyone, haven't I?
I've got a question from Pamela. How is this different to supporting apprenticeships in organizations? Did you do any assessments of those expressing an interest if it's level five?
Yes, uh, so absolutely. So this is, it's not very different. I think what we, what we did do is that we tried to challenge on the requirements. Because I think sometimes with the apprenticeships, it can be quite like narrow in terms of, you know, you need, um, I mean, whatever you need technically from, as part of government requirements, you still need that. But, um, there were some things about, you know, intent in terms of your job suitability that we challenged because you can't do anything about your GCSE and your, in how long you've worked, um, how long you've lived in the, uh, in the, in the UK or EU. So there are some technical like base requirements that we, we couldn't change. And that was because it was determined by the government. But there were some things around, you know, the intent that we did challenge, uh, which is why we changed some things around. Because one of the requirements used to be where you need to be a line manager because only then can you actually apply your job, uh, apply this on your job. So we changed that. We also changed, uh, things around, um, the, uh, the process a little bit around, uh, approval, et cetera as well. So, yeah, to answer your question, I think the core we didn't, but I think there were some things that were probably good to have that we changed, based on, on, on what we could offer as an organization.
Thank you.
Question from Danielle, isn't it? Yes.
Yeah, one from J C and one from Danielle.
Oh, sorry, Josiah missed, missed that question. Um, how long did it take you to start the first cohort from sign-off? Oh, that is very interesting. So, um, fortunately for me, the program was already kind of in play in a different format though with, when I started. But we changed it. Um, I think for us, the, the, the blessing has been because it's all kind of, we all, we, we go back to our culture. So we're saying, well, actually, if that's a priority for, um, you know, uh, for us, for our chief exec, for our executive leadership. I think it's, it's an easier sell for us because we can say, well, actually, this is how it aligns with this. This is important for us and this is what we want to do. So I think it was, um, it was probably just a week or two. Because I think what we went with them was more of a proposal rather than to say, we'd like to do this. It was more about, this is what we're doing, this will be changing. This is what the impact is going to be. And that was quite easy for us. So it wasn't, but I think, it, uh, I keep saying this, but it's, in these, these things are never, never easy. And they, they have to be supported by the right culture and, and kind of mindset within the organization. Because otherwise there'll always be kind of challenge in terms of either through the managers or through, um, your staff groups or even leadership for that, for that matter. Um, I'm gonna, just gonna take Danielle's question as well. Um, how did you build engagement in order to get in, interest from your colleagues to support? Apply. So, uh, really good question, Danielle. So we, um, we do a lot in terms of engagement as an organization generally as well. So we have our staff networks, you know, which is, um, obviously with, as a lot of organizations. So we have obviously our BME, uh, staff network, we have our, um, women's networks as well. We also have other networks. So we, we engage with them, we also engage with, we also have something called, um, uh, service development leads. So these are people who are responsible for, or if not responsible for, do kind of interact a lot around development. So we engage with them. We spoke to ELTs. Um, we also spoke to, um, we also went to the SLTS, which is where, uh, the heads of services are. So there was a lot at different levels. And I think a lot of, of the push that did come from the ELT as well, because they were kind of aligned to this. And it wasn't something different. We're saying, well, actually, this is what we're trying to do. And if that's what we need to do, then this is how, this is a step in that direction. So, um, yeah, so in terms of that, and I think for a colleague's perspective, we did a lot of, you know, come and speak to people who've been on program. We did lots of videos. Um, so there was, there was a lot of awareness. So there was staff were hearing from people who'd been on program. And, you know, I mean, if we tell them anything, I don't think that would make much sense to them. But we had people come and talk about, um, the program and their experience. So we did get that kind of, um, interest in that direction. And I think once it get, once it kind of gained momentum, it became, um, it, it was less about us going to them. It was more them coming to us and saying, well, actually, when are you doing the next one? Because I need to be on this. And the managers were also putting people forward based on the success it had been. And, you know, the ecosystem I was talking about, a lot of people, because they'd been on program or because they had managed someone who, who'd, um, been on the program. There was a lot of kind of putting people forward for this program. So that helped us as well. But I wouldn't underestimate the, uh, the power of comms. So we, we do like proper huge campaigns around that. There's a, the specific, like, there's stuff on our internet, there's a proper newsletter that goes focusing just on that, uh, just, just on this. It talks about, you know, what we're trying to do. So it gets people's attention rather than something you just see somewhere, um, in a corner. So we do an entire campaign for that as well. Um, just looking at Matt's questions, um, the target audience was from what level of organization? Yeah, uh, thanks, Matt. So this is, um, so we say aspiring managers, uh, but I would say, I don't know how the bands are different in the organizations. But this is, um, this is aimed at our bands two and three, but also some fours. So, so band twos are, I mean, we don't have a lot of band ones, that would be our entry-level positions. Band twos are, are tech, are generally would not have line management responsibilities. Our band three would be kind of early, early, kind of, kind of young and early, um, managers. Uh, and then our band four are the middle managers. So, so it is for people who are kind of, who've been in the organization, want to get into the, onto the people leaders, um, uh, kind of ladder. Or people who, who are just, you know, very new managers, uh, so it's right for them. Or, uh, people who just, you know, want to get into the next step in terms of their leadership journey. But it's not for me, middle, middle or, uh, senior managers. Uh, so Mandy's asking, how do you consider any other providers before using Multiverse? And is it level five as we're doing level five, but it takes longer than your program? Oh, that's interesting. I am gonna actually go and ch- Oh, that's interesting. I am going to actually go and check back because, um, to make sure I'm giving you the right information on the program. So I'll, I'll, I'll double check and send you that. But yeah, the multi, I think we started with Multiverse, so we had a lot of success with them. So, uh, the first time we did it, and again, this is before my time, we would have gone out full tender. And I think Multiverse were the most suitable in that lot. And then since then, we've continued because we've had a lot of success with them. And there, uh, the, the best thing we find about them is a firstly, like I said, it's, it's partnership. It's not a case of, you know, okay, we're just going to deliver the program for them, which we found with some of our other providers. Um, but apart from that, they bring us a lot of data in terms of how people are doing. They have their entire apprenticeship community. So the people on program actually get a lot more than just, you know, doing, um, the program itself. Uh, they also, you know, because they're, they're, they have a function of the customer success that they work with us very clearly on. Um, so yeah, it's been, I mean, we, we didn't change that because we, we felt that, you know, it was working well for us and, and we didn't want to change that, uh, because of that reason. Thank you, David. Uh, thank you. I'm just looking at conscious of time. Are people okay? Well, I just, I'm just looking at some more questions, but I think it's the last one from Pamela. Um, connection, did it revisit the recorded video, uh, how, how, how you manage capacity? If you opened up offers to all, including aspiring managers and if it was level five apprenticeship, how did those not in relevant roles with experience of the leader? Yeah, uh, so just on that, I think, uh, it was, it was quite a challenge and it was, there was a lot of back and forth because, you know, it was something that we were changing and it didn't come easy. So what we said is that we identified what part of the program, um, you know, what, what were the elements of the program that needed applying, um, that kind of people managers element, which we can assume was probably quite a lot of it. So we said, you know, if we identified quite tangibly what those opportunities were and where, you know, what, what, what needed to be. So if it was like setting objectives, was it mentoring, was it coaching? What elements of the people leaders profile they didn't, did that need? And then we just found people that they could do it for. So for example, um, if that person does not manage anyone, we found someone, uh, within the wider team or the, or the directorate that they could be responsible for those elements of it. So even though you're not a direct line, line manager to that person, you could be doing elements of that to just get your offers for, for, for that duration, you would be, you'd be responsible for their coaching, mentoring, setting objectives and get that exposure and apply your learning from that perspective. But yeah, it, to answer your question, it wasn't easy. Thank you so much, Mandy. Uh, I think that is probably, um, all the questions, Grace, unless I've, uh, missed anything and conscious of time as well.
I don't think, I think that's all of them. I think you've covered them all.
Perfect. Thank you so much, everyone. Thank you for, uh, staying along and coming, uh, like I said, on a Monday. Uh, very happy to have a conversation. We'll share the slides with you. I think, um, they are generally sent. I'll also send the, um, the details of the actual apprenticeships. I haven't totally anything wrong because my team would kill me on that. So I will share all the details with you about the standard itself and the technicalities of that. But very happy to have any, you know, offline conversations and would love to connect with you if you're on LinkedIn or, or outside of that as well. Thank you.